Good evening. I would like to call to order the November 14th, 2016 Public City Council Meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. McGill?
Here.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here.
Formal approval of the City Council Work Session and Regular Meeting Minutes of October 24th, 2016. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular City Council Meeting Minutes of our last meeting? Seeing none, they're approved as written. Mayor's announcements. I see a lot of people in the audience this evening, and I would like to thank all of you for coming out. We are going to recognize some of our employees this year for the anniversaries. We're going to be starting with 10-year anniversaries and going all the way up to 30 years. So, I'm going to come up and we will tell a little bit about each person, and then we're going to be giving them a few gifts of appreciation for all the time that they've been working in the city of Belbrook. So, thank you all again for coming, and showing up and bringing family and friends. Okay, so, they should be on that table there. Oh, they got names and everything. First, 10 years. Mr. Don Buchek. Don currently serves as Assistant to the City Manager. Don manages daily activities in finance, utility billing, payroll, and human resources. Don produces the city's publications such as website, newsletter, and performs other functions for the administration and offices. Thank you very much for 10 years of service.
I can't believe it's been 10 years. I know.
Next, 10 years of service. Brett Wooste. Brett currently serves as a maintenance worker in the Service Department. Brett has gained a range of experience from water system responsibility to other functions for the department. Brett brings special skills such as welding to the department for special projects. Thank you, Brett. Thank you very much. Another 10 years of service. Jason Harris. Jason currently serves as a firefighter and EMS provider in the Fire Department. Jason has also served the Belbrook community as a volunteer for the Fire Department. Jason has experience as an animal control officer at Green County, and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
John Russell is not here this evening, but John currently serves as a volunteer in the Fire Department. John brings years of fire service and experience to assist the Belbrook Fire Department as a trainer. So, John, if you're watching, thank you very much. 15 years. Kevin Glueker. Kevin? Who's around here? Oh, he's not in attendance. Kevin currently serves as Lieutenant in the Fire Department. Kevin is a shift leader and works as a 24/48 hour employee. He is currently obtaining advanced education as Executive Fire Officer. So, Kevin, is he working tonight?
No, he's doing his Executive Fire Officer training right now. So, he's not, yeah, no, he's not.
Thank you very much, Kevin. 20 years. Ryan Paisley. Ryan currently serves as a Foreman in the Service Department. Ryan oversees the Water Department or Water System and assists the Service Director in managing the Service Department. Ryan? Now, I got to get it right. It's not, no longer Detective, it's Sergeant Keith Salyers. Currently, Keith currently serves as Sergeant in the Police Department. As Sergeant, he serves as a shift supervisor and provides leadership while on patrol. Keith's 20 years of service include time as a Detective for the Police Department. And Jerry Bergen, he is not here. Jerry currently serves as a maintenance worker. He's been here for 30 years. Jerry has a wealth of experience which he uses on a daily basis. He has been a valuable resource for new employees as they learn the department's operations. So, I would like to thank all of our employees for all that long-term service. So, thank you very much. Citizens of Belbrook, I'm sure, thank you. Anyone on council would like to say anything?
Just thank you very much for all your service. Being 30 years, a long time. 10 years seem probably just as long sometimes.
And thank you all, family and friends, for coming out, too.
Yeah, I'd like to thank all the service people. Makes our job a little easier. Everything's got straight continuity. Usually no surprises. Things get done. Most people are happy, so appreciate it.
I hear compliments all the time of how well our city's run, so thank you.
Especially appreciate the long-term service. I know it's not easy doing it that long, but certainly it's nice, so thank you very much.
I would say that you're truly professionals in your own areas of expertise, so thank you for serving the city in that regard.
And we're going to continue business, but don't feel obligated to stay. So, if you would like to exit the building, please feel free to do so. That is all we have for Mayor's announcements this evening and special guests. We do have a public hearing tonight. Ordinance number 2016-12. Mr. McGill?
Yes, Mayor. Ordinance number 2016-12, an ordinance adopting the revised City of Belbrook Personnel Manual, whereas the City of Belbrook periodically reviews its personnel policies and procedures, and whereas the city has made revisions to the Personnel Manual that incorporates these policies and procedures, and whereas the city desires to adopt the revised Personnel Manual. Now, therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1, that the revised Personnel Manual attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference, setting forth personnel policies and procedures for employees of the City of Belbrook is hereby adopted. Section 2, the ordinance shall take effect January 1st, 2017.
Yes, actually, Mr. Buchek, who does most of the work on the Human Resources for us here, is going to come up and give a brief presentation on the proposed changes.
And utilizes 10 years of service.
Yes.
Give it twice, doesn't it?
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you for taking this time to consider this tonight. You know, each year, city staff reviews the Personnel Manual and proposes updates to make sure it meets our needs and current employment regulations. I would like to highlight the significant changes for you tonight. This year, we are proposing modifications to the business expenses or reimbursement policy and the vacation leave policy. With business expenses, the most significant change is that we want to better define meal We want to lower the total daily reimbursement from $75 to $60. We feel that that is more than adequate, you know, it's adequate for traveling expenses there. And also, this amount is closer to the federal government meal reimbursement amounts. And we also want to clarify what mealtimes are eligible for reimbursement when an employee is traveling. That can be kind of a gray area sometimes. So, we also, also, if an employee is traveling for more than 24 hours, a per diem of $60 is being established to make accounting for meals easier for the employee and staff. When an employee is gone for four or five days and they have a whole envelope of receipts, it can just be a little confusing, and sometimes they don't get receipts for certain things. Moving on, we would like to make some changes to the vacation leave policy. Currently, employees accrue vacation leave on January 1 of each calendar year. And with the changes here, effective January 1, 2017, new employees will accrue vacation leave on their anniversary date. Current employees will continue to accrue vacation on their, on January 1, so that will not change for current employees. Vacation leave accrual amounts will also not change. And language is being added to allow us to pay employees for any accrued leave from their last accrual date to their termination date, because there's sometimes a gap between when they accrue it and then when they leave. And then also, employees covered under collective bargaining agreements will not be affected. So, that's a quick summary of the changes there. Answer any questions that you might have.
On the vacation, Mark, or Don, I'm sorry. So, if you start, what's, let's see, I can't remember what the, no, thank you. Just for an example, one to four years, and then you move to 120 hours after five years. So, if I start in the middle of the year, and I get, I will have five years in the middle of that year and start going to the 120, I'll get that vacation that year. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, this is, one of the reasons we looked at changing it, it was when we had everyone on a January 1 date, it really, you could be, well, actually, you got, it was, you got extra is what it was. So, if you were hired later in the year, after one year, you got 80 hours, and then on January 1, you got 80 hours.
So, if you got hired December 28th or whatever?
You would, yes. You would have benefited from the old policy. Now, we'll have it just based on their anniversary date.
When you meet that requirement, that year, you'll receive. Okay. So, my question ahead. Anyone on council have any questions for Don? Does that pretty much summarize the changes?
Yeah, those were the changes.
I know we went through numerous changes over the last few years, not only with this policy, just trying to get them to all equal out, but also our ordinances and all to match Ohio Vice Code and all that kind of stuff. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come up and have any questions or input onto this, into this ordinance, now is your opportunity. Council, does anyone on council have any questions?
I just had a question on the carryover. 80 hours from one year to the next. Do you think maybe it should be more? The reason I ask is, you know, in conjunction with sick leave, sometimes people like to save more to be able to use.
Well, for us, sick leave you can carry over, so this is just vacation leave. Sick leave you can accumulate and you can carry over more. One of the reasons that I had it capped at 80 is I'm a proponent of you need to use your vacation. There's a reason that people grant vacation is so that you actually use it, because I think everyone needs to be away from the job for a period of time. So, that's really one of the things that, without that, and I've seen this in other places, people accumulate up to whatever that max is. They're going to accumulate what it is, and then they're not using it. And I think there is a significant benefit to not only employee, but also the employer when people use their vacation and take that time away from the job. So, it's, we've not had, we've not had too much of an issue with it. This gives me the authority to, if there's extenuating circumstances, I can allow them to carry over a little bit more, and I've done that occasionally throughout the years. If I know that, you know, there's a significant project going on and they could not take that time off, I don't know that there's anyone who has lost vacation because of this policy. We just really encourage them to take it. And come this time of year, that means that maybe they have to take a few more days off that they tried to save it because they weren't sure what was going on, so they have to fit them in somehow, but it's not been an issue.
Okay.
I know, my corporation and a lot of other corporations, we can typically roll one week over, and if there's some special circumstance, you can do two weeks. That's sort of, I can't speak for vector, Artie Canal and those companies, but most of those, they, sort of exactly what Mark was saying, was that they, you have vacations, you use it. The only time you ever get into huge problems are when you have someone who becomes really ill and they're off for an extended period of time, say six months, and they haven't taken any vacation. That's where you can get in some difficult situations.
I know, like federal government, you can carry over 120. And over the 30, past 30 years, always keep the max, and you have to burn whatever you accumulate after that, you know.
So, once you stack it up, you're done.
Once you stack it up, you have to use it anyway.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, our policy is that vacation, unused vacation that is carried over is paid out at retirement, so we don't want to build too much, because then that just adds a liability to us in the long run, too.
So, we don't have that.
Yeah, yeah.
But you do for sake of time.
Yeah. No, we don't. You can use it for extending your time.
Oh, gotcha.
If you got a year, you can extend your annuity out by a year or whatever.
Any other questions?
One quick question, Mayor. You said that those covered by a collective bargaining agreement at this point would not be affected by this. Is that immediate here? Is that, could that not be a subject for bargaining later?
Right, it would. Both of our collective bargaining agreements expire in 2017, so any of these changes, and actually, the police already have a different vacation policy, is that correct, Don? They have a different accrual policy already?
It's same accrual, but their carryover is.
Right, right. So, they accrue at the same rate, but they have similar to what Mr. Green was saying, where they have a larger, in their collective bargaining. The Fire Department mirrors this, so this would be something that we would probably propose to change to match this with the next collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, thank you.
So, basically, the collective bargaining agreement, they use this as a basic template plus changes they've made to the right, I mean, everything in here affects bargaining people, right?
Unless it's superseded by the contract.
Exactly.
Right. If it's not covered in the contract, then the Personnel Manual applies. But if it's covered, like vacation is covered in the contract, then that supersedes us. So, that's why the Fire Department, they've only had, their first contract was initiated in 2014. We actually started with the Personnel Manual as the template for the contract, so that's why a lot of theirs are identical to what's in here. So, yes.
I just was going to say that I like going to the per diem, because I'm sorting through receipts for the person who traveled, and the person that has to review them is a real pain in the rear end.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Good idea.
Any other questions on council? Last call for public hearing. I don't see anyone jumping up. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2016-12?
Move to approve motion, or the ordinance 2016-12.
May I have a second?
Say it.
Yeah. End of roll call.
Motion by Mr. McGill to adopt ordinance number 2016-12, an ordinance adopting the revised City of Belbrook Personnel Manual, seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
That is all the ordinances we have this evening. We have no introductions, and we have no resolutions, but we do have a City Manager's Report.
Yes, we do. Right around here. So, as we, as Mr. Schweller mentioned last time, I think it had happened that day, our audit was released for our 2015 financial statements at our last meeting, right prior to that. So, I just wanted to give just a brief overview of what our financial statements for 2015 cover. So, here, there's a lot of numbers on this page, but this is really a summary of our balance sheet for 2015 and 2014. You'll note on here, 2014 was, is noted as restated. The Government Accounting Standards Board made some significant changes to how pensions are accounted for, and even though the city has no direct pension liability, because it's handled through the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System, we are required now to record a net pension liability on our books. So, that really comes in down into this noncurrent liabilities, where that number now is 6 million. Four and a half million of that liability is a pension liability that is not really ours, but we're required to report it. It's, if you want a long explanation, I'll give it to you sometime, but that's really what that shows. So, it has an impact on our financial statement, but it's just a paper entry. It has no real effect on our budget or anything like that, but we're required to record it this way by the standards presented to us. So, if you look at this, we have total assets of about $28 million, but the majority of that, two-thirds of that, is capital assets. That's our roads, our buildings, our storm sewers, our water mains, that's what's included in that number. So, that's an increase of about three-thirds of a million dollars from last year. Our cash and investments is just about, just under 5 million, slight decrease from last year from what we recorded in 2014. This deferred outflows of resources, that is a number related to that net pension liability. And again, if you want the detailed explanation, I'll give it to you sometime, but I won't go into that here. Current liabilities, these are things like accounts payables, accrued liabilities like pension pay, or not pension, sick leave payouts, things of that nature are what that is. And then the noncurrent liabilities, in addition to that pension liability, that's where our debt would be, because the debt that we have on our water system would be included in that number. And again, deferred inflow of resources, this number actually predominantly is our property taxes, because the way the property taxes work, even though they're assessed as of 2015, we don't collect them until 2016. So, we record them as a receivable, but they're not really ours until the following year. So, again, a lot of numbers up there. This really gives you the net position of the city, and what this shows you is this unrestricted number. This is money that we can use for pretty much anything. That number, before it was restated last year, this was almost $3.5 million. It was reduced down to $550,000 because of this pension number. Again, strictly a paper entry, but it is an impact to our financial statement there. So, in our net position really is a positive $20 million. Again, most of that is due to our capital assets that we hold. So, overall, I guess what, if I wanted to give you the elevator speech about this, our finances are in very good shape. They continue to be very stable. We continue to invest. The capital asset number shows that we continue to invest in the capital assets for the city, and our net position continues to be fairly stable. Anyone who wants to see the entire financial statement document, they can go to this website that I've mistyped on there. No, I guess it's all there. But you can go to that website, you can see it, all our financial statements, in fact, they can.
Cut backs or periods of things.
Yeah, it didn't print on that one, though. That's, something happened there. But you can actually go on the website, and if you click and you go to the Finance page, we have an overview of the 2016 budget. Will be updated once we do the 2017 budget. But as you scroll down, you can see, here's where the 2015 financial statement is, and then really a more relevant document to anyone that wants to understand what the city's spending their money on is the budget. And we have those from the past seven or eight years out here, so if you want to have any idea of the history of what we've done, it's all right here on the website, and you're able to get that and see firsthand for yourself what we're spending our money on. So, that's just a quick overview of those financial statements. Again, a clean audit opinion, everything went fine there, and we'll shortly be doing the 2016 audit, so right around the corner. Beyond that, the Plantation Trail Project, last time, I believe the day of our last council meeting, there was a trucking mishap that damaged one of the culvert pipes, one of the six sections there. Actually, since then, they were able to fabricate that in a really quick period of time. We have an engineer certification that, just because they did it quickly, that the concrete has cured to the point that it needs to. It's actually in the ground. The project is pretty much back on schedule, and they are scheduled to pave that project next Monday. So, with that, by the end of this week, they'll have the other asphalt milled off that we're doing plantation from Bellmead down to Hillcrest there. So, that will all be done. So, they will be virtually done by this time next week is the plan. Assuming the weather holds out and there's no other issues, they will be done. But we were concerned about the asphalt plant's closing, but I don't think that will be an issue now, so. The budget process, we continue that. We had another work session this evening to talk about that. We will have one more to talk about, really, the five-year forecast at our next meeting, prior to our next meeting. And at the next meeting, we'll have the introduction of the ordinance, or the appropriations for 2017, and the amendments to the 2016 budget, the final amendments to that. So, that'll all occur at the next meeting. And then, just to echo everyone else here, the Employee Service Awards, I appreciate all the hard work that the employees here put in. I think it says something, we've done this now for, I think this might be our third year. Each year, we have somebody with 20, 25, 30 years. I think that says something about the City of Belbrook and the place it is to work, because we, people come here and they will generally stay here for their career. I think they enjoy what they do, and they do a great job for the citizens. So, just want to thank all of them like you have for their service to the city. That's all I have this evening.
Does anyone have any questions for our State Manager this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to committee reports. Service?
No real report. I do just want to remind people, since it is fall, not to rake your leaves into the street. We think that's a fire hazard and would also clog up the storm drains. So, please bag them and put them out in the trash, or compost them, or mulch them. And I want to, again, thank all the Service Department folks that have received the long-term awards tonight, so thank you.
Safety?
No reports, sir.
Finance and audit?
Mayor, just a comment to follow up on what Mark presented for the 2015 audited financial statements. Somebody kind of mentioned at the end, is equally important to me as the numbers, and that is, that was a clean audit opinion. And what that means is the State Auditors came in here, spent a considerable amount of time reviewing what has gone on through the year with Don and Mark's entries into the books of record. And a clean opinion means they proposed no adjustments, that is, no changes to the information as submitted and as prepared by our city staff. So, congratulations, and that's the best kind of audit out there. I think we got some recognition from Auditor Yost. I saw a blurb in the newspaper about it, didn't see more about it.
Yeah, actually, and that was on the website there, we did receive the Auditor Estates Award that they provide once you have a, completed a clean audit and that. But yes, we did receive that award from Auditor Yost for that. Those are only granted to entities that meet the criteria that they have, so.
Certainly not everybody gets that, so that's something to be very proud of.
Yes.
Great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Community affairs?
Yes, Mayor. We have chosen a replacement to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term that expires December 31st. After interviewing several applicants, we chose Philip O'Grady to take that position.
And then I'll, the Hill need to come in, then.
Well, we need a motion, yes. This is a recommendation from the community.
The motion is to recommend him.
So, we have a motion on the floor from the Community Affairs recommending appointment of Philip.
O'Grady.
O'Grady to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Term expires 12/31/18.
I will second that motion.
Roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Mittelstetter to recommend appointment of Philip O'Grady to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Term expires 12/31/2018, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
Anything else on community affairs?
The only other thing is that there is a community Thanksgiving service this Sunday evening at 6:30 at the Belbrook Middle School. It's, all of the churches come together. It's a community-wide, just Thanksgiving service.
And we had a very nice community-wide lasagna dinner.
Yes, we did. The Family Resource Center is now dependent upon the citizens of Belbrook Sugar Creek area, and the first major fundraiser cleared over $4,000, thanks to the generosity of donors who provided all of the materials and the food and the baskets for silent auctions. So, that just speaks well for our community that we are aware that not everyone has what they need, and it serves a vital function to our citizens.
That was a very nice bet.
Thank you, folks, for everything, all those who worked on it.
Moving on, any old business to come before us this evening? I see one item of new business. So, it looks, Mr. Carlson is resigning from the Village Review Board, and do we need a motion to accept his resignation?
Yes.
I guess any community affairs, are we now going to interview? Is there an opening on that one? So, if anyone's interested in the Village Review Board, we do have an opening for that. And then, we do need a motion to accept the resignation of Scott Carlson from the Village Review Board.
I will so move that we accept his resignation with regret.
With regret. He's a smart man. May I have a second?
Second.
End of roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Mittelstetter to accept the resignation of Scott Carlson from the Village Review Board, seconded by Mr. McGill. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Any other new business? Seeing none, open discussion.
Do I have anything tonight, Mayor?
Oh, nothing, Mayor.
Mr. McGill?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing. I would like to congratulate the fourth grade We Eagles for winning the Super Bowl this year. That same team won last year, so they won in third grade, and now they've won in fourth grade. And I would also like to congratulate the seventh and eighth grade middle school football teams, who both were undefeated this year. Undefeated. So we had an awesome football year, and it was lots of fun.
Down here, someone got a police escort?
Fourth grade.
The fourth grader's got a police escort? I had a bunch of people ask me about that, and I'm like, I have no idea. Well, there's a bunch of police cars going through town, and all at once going slow with their lights on. So congratulations to the fourth grade team, and the seventh grade, and the eighth grade team, so it's wonderful.
Awesome, and thank you to the city for doing that, that really means a lot to the kids.
Especially the fourth graders.
Yeah, the fourth graders and the grade, everything.
I hope they did, yeah. Mike?
I'd love for a nightmare.
I don't have anything. I know I have seen a lot of stuff regarding Eagle Land, and I had met with Dr. St. Pierre or talked to him, was it technically a meeting, last Tuesday? And I saw some of the comments that the city has something to do with it. It's behind the old Sher Creek Elementary. I think everybody, especially people who are a little younger than me, because they've been there 25 years, and according to Keith, and the insurance company, and the people who inspected it, there was just no way for them to be able to rebuild that or keep that running, and it was essentially an immediate liability and potential safety hazard. And I know they are going to be working on a plan to build another Eagle Land-like playground. It probably will not be behind the school, because there is no, it's no longer a school now, so.
I heard that it was going to be at the middle, at the Belle Creek.
Belle Creek in the media.
Yeah. And I'm sure our police department might like that, because every time we get our Monday police report, it seems like about every two or three weeks, something at Eagle Land, something at Eagle Land.
Yeah, it was, it was an attractive place for late-night activities, so.
Yes.
But yeah, again, as you said, that was, that's not city property, it was owned by the schools, it's not the Park District either. It's one of those things that was always on school property, and I think it was deemed too much of a liability, an imminent liability, that that's why they ended up tearing it down in the time that they had to, so.
Yeah, and it really, I'm very surprised that it'd been there 25 years. I think they were really concerned, not only about the splinters and those kinds of things, where they have had some issues, but the actual footing of the, I'm sure, four-by-fours going to the ground, especially since it's so wet there, especially prior to some of the sewer projects, so. That's all I have. This is open discussion. If anyone would like to get up, please come up, please say your name, and you have five minutes.
Nina Herzog, 255 Upper Hillside Drive, Karen, Bellebrook. About the leaves, especially over hillside, 90% of them land on the street, so I don't know what can be done. I mean, we're starting to, like, sweep them out of the street, so they're not in the street anymore. So I know there's, the store does not have, like, you know, that service, but since most of it lands in the street, I don't know what can be done about that. As I said, you know, our neighbors are kind of keeping our little section of the street clean as much as we can, but, you know, I don't know if it's the residents, you clean your street in front of your house, or what, you know, as far as the leaf issue goes, as far as what's on the street. The other thing is, I'm not, know if it's possible to do a feasibility study, or if it's feasible. Came up with a potential fix for the Upper Hillside Drive, Big Tree, and Main Street traffic issue, not going up, you know, to the school, but coming back down. If that, all three of those, that could be turned into a three-way stop.
The problem with that, and I think we've looked at that, is as you're going up the hill, it's very difficult to put a stop sign.
No, I thought, so I said not going up, I mean down.
Oh, three-way stop.
Just southbound.
Just, okay, so, so you have Upper Hillside, you have Big Tree, and then you have the stop there at Main. So I'm not talking about up, I know how difficult it's going to be up. I don't want it up. Most issues I have is everybody stopping at the stop sign on Main, and not even, I'll sit there on a weekend, and there's like five cars coming down. Nobody stops letting anybody out. I'm thinking that potentially it could be a three-way stop for Big Tree, or Hillside, and Main, that they would have to let people out.
Yeah, well, one is, I wish I had an answer. I think that's one of those things that'll take studying. Now, I will say that, I know we had talked about it briefly in the work session tonight, because there's dollar values assigned to it, of looking at, what's the correct word, Mark, comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Comprehensive plan for Bellebrook to look at, and that would look at multiple aspects of that. Because what's going to happen, no matter what we do, it'll take an engineering study. Two is, whatever we do today is not going to be accurate in another two years when that's fully developed, because there is going to be so much activity there.
Yeah.
And I'm pretty sure what, at the end of the day, stop signs are not going to be very plausible with the traffic, and who knows what'll have to happen to make it more user-friendly, and I am no traffic expert. But I think part of our comprehensive plan, which, you know, we did have something in the budget posed this year.
For 2017.
2017, yeah, I mean, to begin, we're looking at different possibilities on what essentially agency or professional group could help us put that plan together to look at, because we haven't had a formal, formal plan in a number of years, but that, with all the new development, that would be playing a big role in that planning process.
Yeah, and, you know, the big issue is, you know, that, and of course, you know, the little subdivision, little bit down further, you know, we only have the one way and one way out.
Yeah.
So we are...
And it's not very wide, it's going to be virtually possible.
We're basically...
Trapped.
Trapped.
And you're both one-way, definitely.
Yeah.
No back, there's no back exit.
Potentially it's really a stop for now, but yeah.
And I see Mark writing down about your first question regarding the leaves, and I really don't have the answer on that. I mean, leaves fall everywhere, they're always in the street. We don't really have a leaf box.
So I said, you know, I know, you know, we're kind of trying to keep our little section.
Yeah, sure.
Can only do the best you can do. And Mark, isn't there going to be Upper Bellebrook, north of Big Tree, isn't it going to be developed to three lanes at some point in relative, not just in future within Vernon's homes, so it's going to make your problem...
I think the turn lane's coming around really quick.
It's going to make our problem worse.
Yes, that's part of my whole big picture, potential issue.
Yeah, it's going to be ultimately three lanes outside of the city limits.
We're going to have a lot more traffic shooting down into two lanes in the city, because we have no space there in expanded lanes.
Yeah, you know, so the issue may be, you know, unfortunately, people might be going, I can't get out, so I'm going to have to move. So, you know, and I, you know...
Well, especially, it's going to be a big issue in the morning.
That's a really nice area, because, you know, it's good, you only do have the one way and one way out, you really only have people who live there going through there, you know, so you don't have people trying to, you know, like, you know, on 725, you can kind of go down, you know, Linda and cut through the street, and kind of wiggle through out, then skip 725, you know, can't do that, so.
I think all the issues, and I'm sure we'll be looking into those, and if we can get back to you on the leaves, I'm not sure there's an answer on that, Dale would be the gentleman.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, we'll come through with the street sweeper and pick up the debris, because a lot of those will get, as they get run over by cars, they end up getting smaller and smaller and smaller.
Turning into little chunks.
Yes, and then that's what we can pick up with the street sweeper, but that takes a while.
And I don't know if it can be put out in the next newsletter, or maybe an announcement. I do see some people along Upper Hillside in that plot that have swept it...
In the street, yeah.
In the gutter part, so, you know, and they may not know, you know? People move in, people move out, they may not know.
If we see them in the street and they file them, we'll make, we'll make contact with them directly and let them know, but yes, the next newsletter will be too late, because the leaves will have been long gone by then.
Probably still plowed away.
You may want to check Upper Hillside.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I do see a, I usually pick on Boy Scouts. Would you like to come up and introduce your name and tell, I'm guessing you're working on a project or a badge? You got to come up here, sorry. Because you can't, and no one can, no one can hear unless you say, speak into the microphone. They see us talking to, and now you're going to be in the newspaper.
My name's Aaron Greider, I'm from Centerville, Troop 530, but I do live in here in Bellebrook.